All right, good afternoon, everybody. This is the July 16th edition of the Atlanta City Council's Finance and Executive Committee. I'm Howard Shook, Chair of the Committee. Basha Juan is to my right, your left, and we have Mr. Winston, Mr. Hillis, and Ms. Marcy Collier Overstreet with us. So we do have a quorum, and so I will call the meeting to order. There's no changes to the agenda, is that right? The agenda's clean, I'll move adoption, second by one, let's open that vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
I think you've all carefully reviewed the minutes of the prior meeting, I'll move their adoption. Second by one, let's open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed.
All right, thank you. By way of public comment, we have our Inspector General with us today, who is here to introduce us to some interns, I believe.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for making time for us today. For those who I have not had the pleasure to meet, my name is Ladon Blackett. I am your interim Inspector General. I've been here since March 3rd, and it has been a fun, whirlwind experience working with you all. Today I came, and I know I'm going to have another opportunity to give you all some more updates, but we've had some amazing interns in our office. And as a part of the process of their time here with the City of Atlanta, I wanted them to come and meet you all. So if I can introduce to you Ms. Kaylee Hadley. She comes to us from Georgia State University. She is now a senior, she's been approved to get ready to graduate. Ms. Hadley wants to be an attorney, like members of her family. So we have had her working in our compliance division, and she has done an amazing job with us. In addition, we have Ms. Janay Price, who has graduated very recently, this May, from Georgia State University. And she has been interning in our Ipro division. And she has been doing an absolutely amazing job. That's a good segue to tell you that you all, HR, and all the other departments have been amazing to us. We have a one final analyst position that is open and posted, that we are currently interviewing for in Ipro. In addition to, we have fulfilled most of my leadership left upon my entry, having nothing to do with me, but I have now fulfilled the DIG role and the AIG role. And we have some great things going, and we have one more of those positions to fill. So I appreciate that. Not here with us today is one of our amazing other interns from the University of Georgia, Ruby Kelly. She has interned in a number of different capacities at the DA's office and other places. This week she had a camp that she also volunteered for, that she is working at this week. But I just wanted to give you all an opportunity to meet them and see some of the hardworking people here, and also give myself a chance to come and say hello. I hope to be back before the entire committee to introduce the rest of my leadership team here soon and other updates.
All right, Ms. Bakteri has joined us. Well, that's a lot of amazings. Y'all look nervous. Okay.
Go Panthers.
All right, congratulations. The world needs more better attorneys. And so thank you for coming in and helping out while you're here, Judge.
Yeah.
What can we do to help populate your board?
So, that's a good question. The governing board, as you all know, we operate by a governing board, and our office is ready now to present some of those cases I mentioned in a previous committee meeting, some backlog cases. I believe the Law Department and our city clerk has been handling that. We have seen them go through the process. I do think it is time now, as we've, I've had a little bit more time here, to start reaching out to the different organizations, right? We need to let them know, kind of in the same way I was able to tell you guys, this is what we're doing now, here's how things are flowing, things are okay. But we need their help so that we can keep things moving. And so, reaching out to them individually from me, as well as maybe other individuals in the administration, may help to move things along a little quicker.
Okay, good. Now, we all look forward to seeing these sort of cases that got frozen sort of move across the finish line. But can that happen without a board to sign off on them?
Unfortunately, no. We need our governing board to finalize things, in particular to present them to you all as a body. But what I can tell you is happening with them, because they're not just sitting. When we do finish what we believe is an investigation, we are informing the leadership. So our COO, our Law Department, because there are other factors, right? Other moving parts in the city that I may not be aware of. So that allows them to make whatever adjustments they need to make for administrative purposes, while we wait for this governing board to move forward. So, to answer your question, these cases are not in a holding cycle such that it is preventing city administration. What is being held, though, without a governing board is that people whose cases were substantiated or unsubstantiated, it's just floating out there.
Right.
Right, without a resolution. And so the quicker we get one, the better that we can provide resolution for those things. And we have probably about 60 or 70 cases that we are ready to get rocking and rolling.
About all of those names, at one point or another, unfortunately, were bandied about publicly. So we look forward to... How many cases, if you did have a board to present these for sign off, how many would that be?
At least 50. I don't have an exact count, at least 50. And now, and so let me be clear, just so that it's not... I always like to preface, remember, we are a body that anybody can report. They can say that Councilmember Juan has a cat in his tree, and we think it's fraud, right? Our job is to investigate it, does not mean that it is true, right? And so amongst those 60 cases, the vast majority are us saying, we looked at it, it's not fraud, the cat is okay, no worries, right? So while we do have 60, 60-plus cases, I don't want that to presume that there's 60 cases of people doing bad things within the city.
Okay, so stupid question. So you've said you've, you know, word has gone out to the kind of senior leadership team, the appropriate people. Does that include the subject?
So there is a process, and we really want to get a timeline for the governing board, where every subject and every complaintant, if they are not anonymous, will get written notification. A part of that notification is the date of the governing board, because they have the opportunity to come and to speak, and/or to provide documents for that. So short answer is, yes, they will receive notification. They have not all received notification, it depends on where they are in the process.
All right, questions for the judge, questions, comments?
Hey.
Hello.
I believe we spoke, I may have forgotten to listen to you, I'm so sorry, but I believe there is a case that we were waiting to hear back on, just our emergency shelter piece.
Yep, that case is done.
Yes, and I still have not, I don't believe, we still have not been briefed on...
Yes.
Yeah.
So you are in that list of people that I just mentioned, where we need to contact all the complainants, contact all the... We really want to be able to give you a good answer of, this is when you can fulfill an information. But please do contact my office, I'm happy to give you some additional information. So here's our policy, so this applies for everyone. When we finish an investigation, the case is not closed. The governing board closes cases per you all's request, right? However, in between the investigation being completed and the case being closed, our office, our investigators are open to talk to you about the case. We won't turn over any documents, right? But we can talk to the parties of the case. We won't talk to Channel 2, I won't answer random questions from a guy that walks up on the street. But the parties to a case, we are open to discussing, just in case you want to know what the next steps are. So we should set up an opportunity for you to do that.
Because I think, I think you'll be able to tell me information on, that will allow us, that will give me enough insight on how we can improve.
Right.
So I will email.
Is it okay for me to share? And please tell me if I'm going over my time. But what the council, the councilwoman reported a case of the OIG before my administration. One of the big changes, one of the most important changes. I went back and looked at you all's task force report and the other things that we've done. You all created this office for a very specific and limited reason, right? Waste, fraud, abuse, corruption, violations of city code, state code, federal law. That's where we stay. There was a time when every case that came into the OIG's office, catapult a tree, anything, went into full investigation mode. We are not doing that, right? That's not the jurisdiction you've given us. Your case, for example, is one that just does not fit into the jurisdiction of the things that we are responsible for. But we have other oversight offices in this city, audit, and ethics, and others. And so when we determine that something is not in our jurisdiction, we are able to give you a clear explanation as to who should be looking at this issue. Your issue is more of an auditing process than it is waste, fraud, abuse, and corruption.
And I should tell you, I appreciate you saying that. I am deeply frustrated because your predecessor did not share that information. And not only did she not share that information, she did not inform when the case was closed. And also, the appearance was, that piece was kicked down the line because of personal pursuits. So I have a lot of issue with that, because this particular case had to do with servicing our sheltered community. And was really time sensitive, giving extreme heat and extreme cold. So that will be my message back to, I wish I could, I could say that to the, to the former team, because their lack of acts, action, and their lack, and their inability to do their, their refusal to do their job has potentially led to people that we could have saved during those intense weather periods. So I will reach out. I do appreciate you telling me that, that's the first time I've heard this information. And I want to say that I submitted this report over two years ago.
Yes, you did.
And so, to anybody who's investigating in the city, if you are pursuing something for your own headlines and for your own clout, you probably shouldn't be in that position in the first place. So I apologize, but thank you for that.
Going forward, anyone in that position will know within the first 14 days, if a case they've submitted to us does not fit within our jurisdiction, and if we know where they should go to get the assistance that they have, so that that type of thing does not happen in the future.
And before I let you go, I know that you are filling some of your vacancies. Where do you stand personnel-wise?
Again, shout out to HR, really appreciating their help on that. We have two positions, Assistant Inspector General and investigative position, that need to be posted for hiring. And we have two positions, the Ipro position and senior investigative position that's going through application now. So in essence, two, we have two positions that will need to be filled that have not started the process.
All right, well Judge, thank you, thank you. It's nice to be able to meet our interns, good luck with y'all's careers. And Judge, we look forward to having you back here. Which means we really look forward to getting this board filled out, so that we can see the fruits of your labor.
Absolutely, thank you all for your time.
Thank you all. All right, that takes us to presentations, reports, updates. That was our public comment. We have an Open Records Compliance Act that is in handout form. And then we are going to hear from the city auditor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Amanda Noble, city auditor, here to present our quarterly report, wrapping up the fourth quarter of fiscal year '25. So this first slide summarizes our activity for fiscal year 2025. We released 12 audit reports out of our goal of 12. And we've increased this goal to 14 in FY '26. We have seven additional audits in progress that I'll touch on on a later slide. And we'll be working on our FY '26 audit plan with the Audit Committee at their upcoming meetings in August and October. On follow-up, we ended the year with 214 open audit recommendations. We added 84 and closed 78, which is below our goal of 120. We had turnover in our manager position, and this is a person who coordinates with departments to follow up on recommendations. And turnover in departments also affected the process, as we needed to identify new business owners and train them in our system. We've been working on a project with the Mayor's Office of Innovation and Performance to raise awareness of open audit recommendations and how to address them. About 60% of the recommendations we closed were implemented. We dropped the others either because the department no longer agreed with the recommendation, it was obsolete, or the risk was mitigated in a different way. 28 of the open audit recommendations are high priority, meaning the recommendation addresses a problem that is citywide, related to public safety, or related to evidence of fraud or noncompliance with legal or regulatory requirement. The definitions of priorities are on the next slide, we'll go over those. An interactive portal that shows the status of recommendations with the last update from the business owner is available at the link on this slide. On continuous audit, we regularly monitored procurement, accounts payable, and AIM segregation of duties controls, and user accounts with sensitive access. We conducted our first annual review, and these business units have previously accepted sensitive access and SOD conflicts, to ensure that circumstances hadn't changed. We also worked with HRIS to test and modify several roles to remove unnecessary privileges and to identify and remediate users in unnecessary roles. And that's the HR Information Systems Group. Our dashboard, and that's the link on that column, reports results and remediation in these areas. We also ran monthly queries to match the city's supplier table to the employee table on different fields, and referred potential conflicts or problems to the Ethics Office, Office of Inspector General, and/or Department of Procurement as appropriate. We assisted Department of Procurement in its efforts to clean up the city's supplier table by flagging invalid taxpayer ID numbers, incomplete vendor records, potential duplicate suppliers, and legacy one-time suppliers that are still on the table. Finally, we were a resource regarding appropriate assignment of responsibilities in Oracle to avoid segregation of duty conflicts and mitigate risk, especially in the transition of supplier maintenance responsibilities from procurement to finance, and generally answered questions about role creation and provisioning to prevent segregation of duty conflicts. This slide goes over our prioritization of audit recommendations that we finalized in fiscal year '25. So working with the Audit Committee, we defined high priority recommendations as those with one or more of the following characteristics. A citywide impact addresses mismanagement of operations and/or budgets across departments, addresses a threat to public health and/or public safety, addresses evidence of fraud, waste, or abuse, addresses noncompliance with regulatory or legal requirements that could result in large fines or lowered bond ratings, and the condition is urgent, or is important and urgent. As we have, 13% of our open recommendations fall into that category. So an example of an open recommendation that we rated as high priority was our recommendation that the Public Works Commissioner provide guidance to departments with fuel tanks to conduct periodic inspections to ensure the tanks are free from debris and overgrowth. Medium priority recommendations are department-wide, as opposed to citywide, address resource mismanagement such as staffing, equipment, or technology that affect service delivery or customer service, addresses noncompliance with city ordinance or internal departmental policies and procedures. We say the condition or risk is important and may become urgent if not addressed. And an example of an open recommendation that we rated as medium priority is our recommendation that the Chief Procurement Officer ensure all contracts are uploaded into ATL Cloud as part of a ward closeout. Then finally, low priority recommendations are a business unit risk and address outdated or obsolete policies, procedures, or practices that may affect performance, service, delivery, or customer service. You can see that most of our recommendations, the open recommendations, are low priority. We consider them important but not yet urgent. So an interactive report on open recommendations by priority is available as a link on this slide. We're working with our vendor to add priority level to the existing other dashboard, but in the meantime, we'll have two dashboards, and we will update this one. This is the list of the 12 audit reports released in fiscal year 2025. And the slide contains links to the final reports on our website. We completed our first quick response audit, timeliness of payments, and trained all staff on quick response audit methodologies. So our definition of quick response is, it is a single-issue audit with a narrow focus that's designed to address a limited objective relatively quickly. And we also updated our report format to better meet user needs. And these are the seven audits currently in progress. This slide shows our current organizational chart. We had 26% turnover in fiscal year '25. Despite hiring six people during the year, we still have two vacancies that we're working to fill, and one unfunded vacancy. Our Audit Committee, however, is fully staffed. So, looking ahead to fiscal year 2026, as I said, our goal is to release 14 audit reports this year. We are currently undergoing a peer review in which auditors from other local governments audit our processes to evaluate whether we followed the government auditing standards in our work over the last three years. Peer review is required every three years, and this is our seventh review. We should be releasing our FY '26 annual audit plan in October, and we're finalizing our updated procedures for the revised government auditing standards that go into effect in December. Our goal this year is to close 140 audit recommendations. And finally, for continuous audit, our goals are to add HR and payroll to ongoing monthly monitoring, and to clean up other business units and add them as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, questions for Ms. Noble? I have a few, you've answered some of them. When's your peer review going to come out?
It's going on right now, so we should have the report probably Friday, and we'll put it on our website by Monday.
And what does closed as implemented mean?
It means that the department told us they implemented the recommendation, and we did some, at least limited verification, to agree that the recommendation was implemented.
Okay, so that's just a kind of a random sampling that you do? You don't look at all of them, do you?
Well, it's reported on the website, we track it. So when we close it, it's, we determine whether it's implemented. Mostly, we had been closing implemented recommendations, and this past year we did a little bit of cleanup as we finalized our prioritization. So some particularly old recommendations that were low priority, we closed. There are still a few recommendations that are from like 2013, but they're higher priority, so we've left them open.
Okay, it seems as though your organization needs a whole lot less outside help than some of the earlier years. Do you ever need to go outside for supplemental support?
We have thought about it, and we, I would have liked to put a little extra money in the budget for this year for, you know, contracted services, but we didn't have that opportunity, really. We can mostly do stuff in-house. If we can't, we'll either hire somebody or defer until we can.
And the ones I remember where outside help was brought in, both involved, it was either the airport or watershed, almost always, and then not really the general fund functions. And then, well, the last one I had is, so your closure goal, I mean, in a perfect world, you would like to see 100%. So how did you decide on an acceptable percent?
On the 140, or the goal to close?
You mentioned, you mentioned at a certain percentage, you know, had been attained.
Oh, yeah. In an ideal world, they, we would close all of them as implemented. In the real world, not all of them are going to be implemented.
Right.
So I'm not sure what's acceptable, probably 90% I'd like to see. 10 would be obsolete if departments were more prompt about implementing, then they wouldn't be, you know, six years old and no longer relevant.
You know what might help this council out, or at least be interesting, would be a reverse list, which is like the 10, the 10 stalest things that people refuse to implement.
Well, we, we do provide, and it's on our dashboard, either one really. So we do have ways of aging. The aging report is actually pretty ugly, because most recommendations are past due. As you know, we ask departments whether they agree with the recommendation when they plan to implement it. So we record when they plan to implement it and start following up at that date. And I think, right now, 38 or so of the 214 recommendations are still within that window, and everything else is past due.
Okay. Before we move on, I want to recognize the presence of our former colleague, Erin Watson, who is with us today. Mr. Juan.
So I was trying to find on your website where I can get a breakdown of the high pri, or the high priority ones. Is it on, I looked on the dashboard, but it's not there.
Okay, yeah, we have two dashboards. So on that, the link on the slide where it says open recommendations by priority, that's actually a link, and that will go to our dashboard. And if you can't find it, I'll email it.
If you can, that'd be great, just email it, thank you.
Others? All right, Ms. Noble, as always, thank you and your team for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Oh. Yeah, while you're here, want to just knock out the Beltline?
Sure. So Tiaja Farrar will go through the presentation, and we'll both be available to answer questions.
Okay, so if there's no objection, we'll go a little bit out of order here, so we can let them get on with their day. Now, a lot of us, yeah, I will. It's the dual referral. This is 25C0090, communication from Mr. Penobi, who's CPA and the Chair of the Audit Committee, submitting the performance audit report, Beltline SSD Financial Review for 2025. Now, as y'all have already presented this, I'm going to give you the opportunity to give the few of us who haven't heard it, but have already looked at it, the opportunity for you to give it to us in Cliff Notes version.
Cliff Notes version, all right. Well, good afternoon, you guys.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, council members. As Amanda stated, my name is Tiaja Farrar, and I am one of the performance auditors who worked on this audit alongside of, with Zoe Geiger, and under the supervision of Myra Hagley and Chris Armstead. As you probably already know, this is our second review of the Beltline Service District. The first review was more focused on the program structure and controls, and this review covers the district's collections and spending from June 2022 to June 2024. Is that okay for Cliff Notes right now?
So far, so good. We'll let you know.
All right. So we, this audit focused on three objectives. How much money has been collected since the SSD started, and where has this money been spent? Our key controls for the program functioning as intended, and has the previous audit recommendations been implemented? I'm going to skip this slide, because this is just a little background on the SSD, unless you want me to go over.
You're doing fine.
Okay. All right, so the SSD was created in 2021 to help cover the budget shortfall caused by factors such as the 2009 recession. The Atlanta Urban Redevelopment Agency, or better known as Aura, issued a $95 million bond to finance property acquisition and trail construction, which is secured by the Beltline SSD tax levy. As you see on this exhibit number two, on the right, shows project revenue for the SSD and how it helps fund the Beltline Trail along with other sources. So ABI can, or Atlanta Beltline Incorporated, can only spend bond proceeds in areas where the SSD and the urban redevelopment area overlap. Exhibit four here shows the areas along the trail segments, highlighting SSD in pink and the urban redevelopment area in blue. In addition to these geographic restrictions, the use of SSD bonds is restricted to engineering, utility relocation, construction, ADA accessibility, and safety features like lighting and cameras. During this audit, we found that SSD collections have exceeded consultant projections and annual debt service. Majority of bond proceeds were spent on the south side, west side, and northwest trails. ABI has appropriate invoicing and requisition controls in place, and almost all recommendations from our previous audit were implemented. Since its inception, SSD revenue has increased each year. As shown on the screen here, the city collected 3.2 million in fiscal year 2022, 6.6 million in fiscal year 2023, and 7.6 million in fiscal year 2024. SSD has also collected 36,000 in interest and penalty fees in 2023 and 2024. Exhibit seven shows the consultant projections in beige, orange, and gray, and the actual amount collected from the city in blue. As of June 2024, 17.5 million SSD revenue has been collected. These collections are about five years ahead of schedule based on the consultant projections. The SSD levy was not expected to generate 7.7 million until fiscal year 2029, assuming a 4.5% annual growth, but this amount was nearly reached in fiscal year 2024. The bond agreement requires Aura to set aside 5.3 million in debt reserve fund to secure bond repayment. If annual SSD revenue exceeds what's needed for bond repayment, the surplus can be moved to the discretionary fund for additional project costs or to repay the bond early. As of March 2024, SSD collections were more than... than enough to cover bond obligations. However, none of these funds, of the excess funds, have been moved to the discretionary fund. As of February 2025, ABI has spent 61.7 million of the bond proceeds to construct trail segments on the northwest, south side, and west side trails. Exhibit nine on the left shows construction phases for each Beltline Trail, and the exhibit eight on the right shows that there's about 20 million left of the $88.1 million bond proceeds. Although none of the trail segments have been completed, ABI staff projects that intro, in-progress trail segments will be completed by the end of fiscal year 2026. We reviewed ABI's vendor invoice payment process to determine whether controls were in place to ensure that the SSD bonds proceeds were spent appropriately. For the purpose of this audit, we sampled 30 random invoices for services completed between January 2024 and February 2025. From our review, we found that all invoices complied with guidelines for allowable expenses, and that all payment requisitions showed consistent documentation for work performed and documentation of approvals. In our 2022 report, we issued four audit recommendations. The first was to create an MOU, second to update PMPs with SSD language, third was to update the chart of accounts with SSD financial information, and the fourth was to lay out a reporting framework in the MOU to include specific SSD data. We found that the first three recommendations were fully implemented, and the fourth was partially implemented. While ABI has created an MOU, they do not present specific SSD data to council such as tax collections, project completion status, and discretionary fund details. In order for you all to make decisions based on the SSD, or to support decision-making and to mitigate the risk of excess collection, ABI should report these details to you all. Because of that, we only have one recommendation. Based on our audit findings, to ensure that you all have detailed information regarding decision-making for the SSD, the COO, ABI, and Invest Atlanta all agree with this recommendation, and ABI is already in the process of working with Invest Atlanta to include relevant SSD information for future reports. And that is it. We would like to thank ABI and Invest Atlanta staff for their cooperation and support during this audit. I will now turn over any questions to myself or Amanda. Was that good for Cliff Notes?
Yeah, that was excellent. That was excellent. I hope others were taking notes on that. Is there anyone from the subject agency here? As is our custom, we always ask if there's any comment. No one here from Beltline?
I don't think so today. They were here yesterday. I'm not sure.
Well, that's fine. I mean, if they're not here, we don't expect you to answer for them. I will note that this committee doesn't have, does expect a representative of any subject that's been audited to be here for questions, because I suspect there may be some for them. Others?
Yeah, I do have some questions for the Beltline folks. I appreciate the analysis you've done. It's nice to see it relatively clean. One, I think mine are more just kind of structured, some decision governance type things going forward. So, Mr. Chair, since they aren't here, I'm going to move that we hold this until they can be here at a future meeting to answer those questions.
Okay. You know, and I think that's appropriate. So the normal thing we would do is accept and file, but I think in order to sort of really complete the conversation, they need to be here. I know one of the questions I would like to ask is around the fact that the revenue, I guess, has them five years ahead of schedule. So my question would be, well, what did the consultant get wrong to begin with? So I'll start with that next time. Any questions for Ms. Noble or her team? Inspector?
One, Ms. Noble and team, once again, thank you for everything. Just again, non-note for you all, note for the Beltline when they do come in. I will also follow up on Council Member Wong. I am going to, just so they are aware, I'm going to have a lot of questions on how the SSD dollars are being spent and where they are being spent, because some of those outlines were, in fact, troubling to me. So just a note for them, and thank you all so much for the work you've done.
All right, we'll take that up next time. Thank you, Ms. Noble. Let's open the vote on motion to hold.
The vote is open.
And vote is closed. Six shades, your names.
Thank you. We have one consent agenda item. I'll sign the caption 2501417 as an ordinance by Finance Exec to amend the cited sections of the code here to improve customer service standards, to increase occupational efficiencies, to levy a more appropriate occupation tax, and to better reflect the cost of the city for the issuance and occupation tax certificates, to amend the occupation tax table and for other purposes. So we'll take this up at our next sitting upon return from recess. And so just be aware, members of this committee, if you have not already avail yourself of the opportunity, the Finance Department and Mr. Ammon are circulating around and looking to set up a time to sit with you, Mr. Wong.
Does that, can we go ahead and start moving this through the NPU, though? Because that is going to take up some time, and I'd like to not wait until after recess before we do that. Do we know if that process can start?
That process has begun.
Okay, and so that entails a public hearing, but then separate from that, the observance of the so-called Moore Rule, where the NPUs need the time and space to consider it. Okay, good. So that's already in motion, so we'll take that up next time. That takes us to ordinances for second read. Is there no objection? Let's take two and four together. 2501398, ordinance by Mr. Hillis authorizing a donation amount not to exceed $12,500 from the District 9 Carry Forward Account to the West Side Howe Mill Community Improvement District to support the West Side stride pursuant to the Code section of the charter listed here. Four is 2501407, an ordinance by Mr. Bond authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $1,000 from the Post 1 Carry Forward Account to Clark Atlanta University to support the athletic program pursuant to the same section of the city code. Motion is to approve both. Second by Wong. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, I have it to word. 2501406, ordinance by Mr. Amos supplementing that certain 38 supplemental bond ordinance adopted by the Atlanta City Council on the date listed and approved by the mayor on the date listed, too, among other things. Set forth the terms of the City of Atlanta. One, Airport Customer Facility Charge Revenue Bond Series 2025A, and two, Support Customer Facility Charge Revenue Bond Series 2025B within certain parameters previously established by the city, including the original aggregate principal amounts, interest rates, maturity amounts, maturity debts, redemption provisions, and debt service reserve requirements with respect to, two, firm satisfaction of the additional bonds test with respect to the Series 2025 CFC bonds, ratify certain prior actions with the City Council and certain officers and agents of the city with respect to the issuance and sale of the 2025 CFC bonds, ratify and approve the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, ratify and approve the preparation, use, and distribution of a preliminary official statement, and the execution and delivery of a final official statement in connection with the offer and sale of the 2025 bonds. Authorize the city finance officer to create the 2025A taxable customer charge revenue bond series indicated, and series 2025B, customer facility that should read a charge revenue bond, and amend the FY 2026 bond by adding to anticipations and appropriations bond proceeds in amount not to exceed 310 million for the Series 2025 CFC bonds to provide an effective date and for other purposes. So we need to send this forward with no recommendation on condition of receiving a substitute, after which we would take this up at a special call meeting, which has been scheduled for 9:30 a.m. of August 6. But right now, do we have any questions or comments about this proposed paper? Okay, so I'll make the motion, and Hillis is second of the motion to Senate for with no recommendation on condition of receiving the needing substitute. So let's open. Let's open that vote.
Vote is closed.
All right, thank you. That takes us to resolutions. Let's take 25, let's take 25R3659 and 25R3660 together. The first is a resolution by Shook authorizing Commissioner of Watershed Management to adjust water sewer service charges on certain customer accounts in accordance with the Atlanta City Code section listed in the amount of blank. The second is a resolution by Shook authorizing the CFO to amend refund customers for overpayments to water sewer accounts in the amount of blank, all funds being charged to you and paid from, et cetera. Neither of these are needed now, so the motion is to hold. Second by Wong. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. And the vote is closed.
All right, we've handled our duel. Mr. Wong?
Thank you. Colleagues, under, I think papers held in committee, this may be a question for law or the parliamentarian. This is 2401309. It's item number 11. It is due to come off by the one-year rule, but I think we, I'd like to keep it alive. I have a meeting with Deem and Parks this week where this may be necessary still. So is the appropriate action for me just to rehold this? Can I do that, or is it just die on the vine automatically?
Trump?
Yes. Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. And so the year will start over if the council were to, I mean, this committee were to take it off held and then rehold it, thereby starting the clock again. It happens, the expiration happens after the full council meeting, so that's why it's appearing here, but it would happen. It would happen automatically if it happened, if nothing happens between now and the full council.
So to keep it alive, the appropriate action is for me to make a motion to hold it, continue holding it?
Well, to bring it off held papers, and then for the committee to make a new motion to hold, so that the date of the hold would be today.
Got it.
That would be a way to get around that.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to ask to take this off of held, but there's not an action there, but I will make a new motion to refresh the hold. Is that appropriate? Take it off the hold, held? Okay.
I mean, usually, there's no, is there no vote needed to take something off a held? The committee just takes it off a held, but there needs to be an actual vote to hold again.
Okay. All right, so I'll make the motion to hold again. Do I need to, do you need to sound the caption? Sorry. He's so ready for recess.
So am I. This is lengthy. This is 2401309, an ordinance by Finance Exec authorizing the mayor to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in the cited section of the city code, as well as any other conflicting code provisions, and to ratify services rendered in connection with the FC indicated Commercial Property Management Services Agreement with the Shopping Center Group LLC for property management services for approximately 2.94 acres of improved real property located at the addresses listed on Monroe Drive in Atlanta, as well as Piedmont, collectively the property, and commonly known as the Clear Creek Center, beginning December 1 of '03, through the execution of the First Amendment to the agreement and authorize the mayor's design to execute the First Amendment to the management agreement to extend the period of the agreement for a month-to-month basis for a period of up to one year effective retroactively from December 1 of '23 through November 30 of '24, or until the new commercial property management contract is awarded and the associated agreement is fully executed on behalf of Deem in accordance with the agreement's existing compensation schedule, with all contract work to be paid from property revenues, et cetera, and for other purposes.
So, Mr. Chair and colleagues, I apologize, but I just conferred with city attorney. The one before that also needs to be rehelled. So the annexation paper, I have a meeting right after this to talk about, and it still lives.
Okay, so we'll take these together then. That would be 2301658, ordinance by Mr. Wong, as amended by Finance Exec to provide for the annexation of property located at the addresses listed in Atlanta into the corporate limits of the City of Atlanta, Georgia pursuant to the 100% method to extend the boundaries of the land independent school system to notify the DCA of such annexation and for other purposes. Are you sure these are the only two?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I will second the motion to hold both. Let's open the vote.
That vote is open. And that vote is closed.
They remain freshly held. Mr. Evans, do we have any other business?
Just to announce when our next meeting will be, due to recess, the full council will meet on August 4, but summer recess begins as soon as you gavel.
I'm well aware of that. Is there any announcements that need to be made?
It's my partner, Chris's birthday, and it's her birthday today. She turns 36, so happy birthday, Chris, and thank you for putting up with me for 12 and a half years. Cheers to many more. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.